Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The last meeting has gone to order. We're calling Nancy Walpock.
Mayor Reidenhour.
Here.
Earl.
Here.
Ewing.
Yes.
Barton.
Here.
Knox.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. First, we agree to the prior minutes. So approved. This is the law.
One million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-eight cents in all funds. Three hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-six cents in the general fund.
Any additions?
No additions.
Bills were read. Resolution seventeen dash eight dash one was adopted on motion by?
Earl?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
All right, we'll go to the guest section. Lisa?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I'm here today is, as a small business owner, I have some concerns about the overdue or delinquencies that are allowed for at least a couple, one of my renters. And I don't know what's going on with the rest of the residents of the village. And in reviewing the bill that we get and what's on it, it says they may be subject to to a disconnect if they're beyond the thirtieth of the month by not paying. And that to me, and I don't know if your attorney could probably answer this better, but that means you have the ability or prerogative to extend credit, if you would, to a resident who hasn't paid their bill and say, "Well, we're gonna let you set up payments," or "We're gonna not disconnect you and you can try to make arrangements," or, you know, there's this kind of, I don't wanna say wishy-washy, but that's kind of what it is. It's kind of arbitrary and capricious that, you know, "I will let you do this," or "I may not let this person do this." But there's no, to me, there's no teeth in what that utility bill says in terms of disconnection. And then, as a small business owner, what that ends up doing for me by a higher revised code in seven four three, which is the utility or rinnings of water, and I believe that's what the village may be using. I know that other villages use that as a basis for their utilities and how they collect them and charge for them. But by that, as the owner of the property, I ultimately become responsible for that delinquency and whatever amount it is, if that tenant would move out and leave the rearage in on their utilities. My concern is, it's come to my attention, that I had a renter that had a bill almost at $2,000 since last February, and they're still at $1,200 and some dollars. And my concern as the small business owner and the ultimate responsible person of that bill is that you're extending my credit to a fairly significant amount of money without my knowledge. I understand, and Jerry was kind enough to share with me a letter, basically, in educational terms, we would call it a waiver to give up my rights of privacy and be allowed to give certain information to people that otherwise would not happen. And so what this is, is a Village of Waynesfield agreement for the provision of utilities to non-owned real estate. And at the bottom, and I don't know if council's familiar with this form, if you've seen this form, this is the only copy I have, but if you'll indulge me, I'll read the pertinent parts to you. Is that okay? Thank you. Okay. So basically, it's telling you that there's a deposit for a residential of 200, 500 for business or one and a half times the monthly bill for utilities supplied by the village. That would be your visit, subject to subject real estate averaging over the preceding 12 months, whichever is greater. The signature of all owners and tenants of the property where the utilities are to be supplied agreeing to the following. "We, the owners of the above referenced real estate, in consideration of the provision of utility services to the above referenced real estate by the Village of Waynesfield, hereby agree to be liable for and offer our personal guarantee for any and all delinquent or overdue utility charges for the subject property. Further, after reasonable notice and opportunity to pay, should we fail to pay the overdue utility charges, we hereby consent to the assessment of the overdue charges to the property taxes for the above referenced property." All right, and then the last sentence, "Tenet or occupant, by signing below, hereby agrees that above any default in the payment of the tenant's or occupants' village utilities, the Village of Waynesfield may give notice to the owners or owners of the real estate of such default in the amounts of the default." So that last sentence basically is giving, in my mind, is saying that as a tenant, I'm allowing the village to give my, their name and my, my name and my bill amount to the owner of the property. But the one above it has concern for me as well, because it says, I should, as the landlord, I should be signing this and saying, "I agree and am willing to be responsible for the overage." I've never signed one of these. Matter of fact, I didn't even know it existed until I came down the other day and Jerry shared it with me. Furthermore, on the form, there's nowhere for a date. There's no date of when the form was created, or how it was created, or who created. So I don't know where it came from. I don't know who did it, who made it up, if it was council or their legal council, but I can't believe legal council would make this up without putting a date on it somewhere. But this is out here. So, and then on your bill, it says, "Subject to." My concern, and I'm willing to be a part of a committee, a fact-finding committee, to say, "How do we address this?" Because if, if one of my tenants has a bill upwards to almost $2,000, and I didn't hear Jill say what your total accounts receivable were, which would be the amount of monies owed through the utilities company, I would assume. I didn't hear that in the report. I did hear balances, but I didn't hear accounts payable, but I didn't hear accounts receivable. I did ask Jerry verbally, I didn't put it in writing, if I could have the amount of overdue, total amount of overdue monies in the utility fund for delinquent accounts, and I didn't get anything. And I don't know if she didn't have time, or I needed to put that in writing. And I don't even wanna go there. I know some amounts, but they're rumors. I have no clue if that's accurate. But there's concern, obviously, number one, extending my credit as a property owner to that amount without my prior approval. Number two, I'm concerned about how are we deciding who gets that amount of extension? Is that everybody in the village, or nobody? Number three, we really don't have any teeth in the bill as it's currently written in terms of saying, "You're delinquent. We're shutting you off." I did contact the City of Wapok, the City of Lima, and the Village of DeGraff to find out what they were doing, and Wapok is pretty strict. If you don't have that bill paid by the twentieth of the month, they go out and they shut you off. And they won't, they will not. They will not extend credit. And if you don't pay it off by that twentieth, they shut it off the next day. I asked them if they gave any extensions, and they said, "We might, we might, under extenuating circumstances, give a 24-hour extension, but it has to be paid in full. If there are no payments, there's nothing." They do, in Wapok, they do contact the property owner, if it's a tenant. They will call them and say, "We have a tenant, one of your tenants, who is asking for or requesting an extension of services to try to establish payments." They will not do that without the express permission or written permission of the property owner, because, again, you're extending the property owner's credit if that tenant would leave. The Village of DeGraff, when I spoke to their mayor, they currently are at zero amount. She has nobody that's delinquent on any utilities, and they shut it off. If they don't, if they're not paid by the due date, whatever that is, by the end of the month, they shut it off and have a $30 reconnect fee. And she said, "The way they start is they turn the water off first." That seems to get everybody's attention. When they don't have water, they seem to kind of wake up a little bit, and then they go from there. But that, so that's how they do it. Lima's is a little more complicated, but it's pretty much the same. If the bill's not paid, they shut it off. And then there's a reconnect fee. The penalty varies for lateness between what I could find. Wapok, I think, is 5 percent. Where, Waynesfield, by what I read on my bill, is at 10 percent. DeGraff was at 10 percent. Lima's at 10 percent. So those were, and that's a one-time fee. So, you know, as a taxpayer, again, if the village is extending upwards to $2,000 for almost six months, at 10 percent interest, I'd like to get on that train. You know, one time. It's 10 percent one time. So that's pretty cheap. But anyways, I'm coming to you as council, and Fred as the village administrator, and saying, "What can we do to clean this up, to make this better, not only for the village, but for us small business owners and for the tenants, so that they know what they can expect and what's going to be expected of them?" That's ultimately my question. Would it be possible, if I put in writing, gave you a certified letter that said, "None of my tenants can be delinquent by more than their 20 days," and that they be shut off? Is that something that could be honored? I mean, that's a fix for me. That's not a fix for, that's not a fix for everybody. It's not a fix for whatever accounts receivable the village currently has of taxpayers' money that's sitting out there, because you have to pay for the electricity. You get it, you use it, you pay for it. And then, obviously, we as users pay you. So if you have any accounts receivable out there that are still delinquent, then the village is actually giving credit to its citizenry for their electric, in my view.
Can I ask you a question?
You sure can.
Is this more than one month?
Yeah, my understanding is it was three months during the winter, and it's yet to be totally paid.
Interesting. We used to get the delinquents in our packet. Why did that stop?
It's not public knowledge. I don't know. I mean...
You've never gotten it since I did.
That was for the Board of Public Affairs.
Yeah, you've never gotten it.
And Fred is the Board of Public Affairs per se.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm sure that Bill Maher, when he was on here, got that. Well, we were getting them again.
You got, they wanted a number at the end of the month of delinquent, how many it was, a number. I'll let her finish.
So isn't it, I know you people all hate this when I say, "Well, back when we had a board." But when we had a board, we did have it set up where the landlord or the homeowner was allowed to know. When, soon as it was delinquent, they were told. If somebody, Fred will say, extends credit past that month and past that due date where it should be shut off, then, in my opinion, if I was a homeowner and renting it out, I shouldn't be responsible for that second, third, fourth month like I would be the first one.
Well, I do know that there are agencies that pay people bills when they get them. A lot of times, that takes, what, a week or so before those payments come in? So we have extended till the check comes in. There are situations where there may be somebody in the home with either small children during the winter time or health issues.
Let's just cut to the chase here.
Yeah.
It's been, are you done, Lisa? Because I don't wanna interrupt your dialogue.
I'm not sure.
Well, what I'm saying is, there's been a lot of statements here and a lot of, you know, opinionated opinions of how it is. When I came here seven years ago, there was three pages of delinquencies. That was constant, consistent. And now, we average monthly about 14 people. And by the end of, where we get to the absolute due date. And how that is, is a result of, in the winter time, we have a unique situation here. Nobody ever wants to bring it up during the electric bill utility, but they can't, they can't not account for it. And that is, we're a town that doesn't have natural gas. And all the white elephants in the yard get filled up in the fall. When winter comes along and it takes a minimum of $1,500 or whatever to fill it, they go to the electric. There's electric baseboard, there's electric heat, and we see the numbers go astronomical. And because a lot of these homes or rental places sometimes have difficulty in heating and maintaining that heat. So in one month, you could get a $300, $400, $500 bill in one month. And what happens is, we operate in arrears. If they start the bill the first of the month, it's not due until the 30th. They've got a month. We send out a notice on the 10th day, like we do. Now we're into the second month. And we usually try to mandate by the 20th of that month to be sure. So before you know it, you're two months behind before you get started. So that's kind of the catch part of that. But when I came here, they told us that they even had a plan in place to try to catch some people up, where they had a seven payment plan, spread over seven months, trying to recover it. And that worked to get some of the really delinquents, because we inherited some large delinquents and consistent delinquencies. And so the goal was, council at that time said, "We wanna collect. We wanna get that." And we wanted to try to protect the property owners, if you will, the best it could be done in the circumstance, give them an opportunity to pay it. It's not a fail-all, fail-safe. There is things that slip through the cracks. But I think another thing we have to look at in this situation, yes, it's subject to change at the end of 30 days. I'll be honest with you. It would make my life easier, and everybody in this office's life easier, and the employees easier, that on the first day after the 30th that they were shut off. No questions asked, just shut off. Because every month, we go out and probably deal with 95% of the time, the same people every month. And we deal with the same situations. And I will tell you, and Jerry can reaffirm this, probably 95% of our delinquencies that we have issues with like that are rental properties. So my recommendations, without committees and reinventing the will and everything, is a very simple one. And some communities do it. They mandate that the property owners keep the utilities in their name. They're the small business that they're talking about that is sending out rent payments and collecting. I have to ask the same landlords, when they come to me complaining about several months of delinquencies, "Are those people current on their bills?" They don't tell me that, but I venture to say that they're not current on their monthly rent either. And had they implemented their business ahead of time, we wouldn't be at that point. So the thing is, that some landlords want the village to be their catch-all, their fail-safe. When the quick solution is, "Keep it in your name," then you can see what it is. It's your business, plus we only charge a $200 deposit. And when I'm here, and if it's a small business, we have a requirement that says businesses should have a $500 deposit. So there's things I think the homeowners can do to protect themselves. Furthermore, I have a certain segment of landlords that I never hear from. They do background checks, they do applications, they do their due diligence, and we never hear from them. So usually, the squeaky will or the problem is usually a specific segment of not only landlords, but renters. And it's kind of a vicious cycle. Now, sometimes, there are people that play the system. We do everything we can. We do not allow somebody that leaves with a unpaid balance to get utilities in their name again until that bill's paid. If it's a year, two years, or three years. We try to put that back to the landlord. We really do try. The letter that has been referenced was a letter that was generated, and it's been so long ago. I'm sure the legal team did it, if you based on the language that was stated. But was an opportunity, because landlords would come in and say, "I wanna know what my bill, my tenant's bill was." That's private information. You can't do that. But here's a document that says, if you're, if you put it in your application with your renter, that you can have them sign that, that you can have knowledge of that bill. Now, I heard something referred to about the fact that you're accepting responsibility if you sign that as a landlord. You have to also understand, that isn't the only thing that says that. By law, we have the right to put it on the taxes. So whether or not you sign that document or not, that's the legal opportunity a village has in municipal utility. So I guess my, the long and short of it is, we really don't like to see anybody suffer, but we do have extenuating circumstances. I know at the time, there was an 80-plus-year-old lady that never missed a payment. And all of a sudden, it was on the delinquency to be shut off. That threw up a flag to us, and we checked and sure the check had been written and everything. She forgot to send it. If we implement the policy of shut off on day one after the 30th day, which we can do, that needs to be across the board for everybody. No exceptions. That way, it's consistent and fair. But that's the people you're also gonna capture in that. That's why we try to work with people. I don't know the exact perfect answer, but I know the one true solution for landlords that I really strongly recommend, require them to keep it in their name. Because as the same bill they collect for rent, they can collect for utilities. Why is it our responsibility to maintain their, their business?
Are there legal ramifications? I mean, can you shut off utilities to, say, a house where there are children or where there's elderly? I mean, can you do that?
Yes, you can.
I just didn't know if there was...
I mean, there are certain times, I knew, in some for-profit utilities, that there's certain times a year. I don't know if that's private. That'd definitely be a legal interpretation.
That'd be something we have to...
They'd have to look into, but to my understanding, just trade knowledge as municipal as we can.
Okay. I didn't know whether there was...
Because we have people also manipulate that. They'll run and get a doctor's slip and say, "Hey, you can't shut it off."
Yeah.
Again, it is a small segment of our community.
Well, and like I had said before, there, I know there's been times where we waited on a HEEP payment and we continued service until we got that payment. So sometimes it would be...
And that payment was for the previous month, so they're appearing in the new one.
But HEEP guaranteed that we was gonna get paid, but then you have that section in between.
And continually on. And they only do so much so long.
Right, right.
So I'm not opposed to creating a policy that says, "I, as your administrator, recommend that landlords or property owners maintain utilities in their name." And if you wanna go a little step further, to ensure it by saying, "On day one after the 30th day," because it could be the 28th day of leap year, or in February in leap year. So I'm just saying, the first day after the month, that if they're not paid, we go out, no questions asked, because unfortunately, my guys go out to do shut-offs. And we do a lot of notifications and reaching out, because we're a small community. We all know each other, and we interact with one another. And every case, almost, they don't really do something until they're at the door pulling the meter. And that's embarrassing for them guys. It's embarrassing for the people.
They do knock on the door and say, "Sorry, but we have to do this."
And we try to do everything we can. And, but we do, we have had landlords and property owners that are okay with working with them as long as it's to a degree. I think Loz and Keeping a Test, I've talked to her before in the past about the possibility of working with somebody that's having difficulty. And you actually was in agreement to do that because of their history.
Yes.
So there, it's kind of, there's, this is one of those things, if you're gonna do something, you gotta take the gray area out. And I think the gray area is, is keeping the landlord's name or the property owner is the best for, overall best. But if you do decide to go to a definitive termination date, it has to be across the board. Now, if a property owner, I'm not saying, if they come in and sign a document saying, "On this day of that month, I want it done," that you couldn't pass that, and we would enforce that. I'm not saying, that's not a problem. But again, there can't be a lot of gray in there, because we're already working in the gray. It works overall, but there are some that slip through the cracks, and it makes it difficult. And for that, we try. But then we even, like I said, we file that person, and we've even, I'm just saying, we do everything we can to recover that loss with our ability, more than I think a lot of people would.
Well, and we're also looking at, you know, when somebody basically stiffs this landlord and then goes to move into another spot, they're putting it in their girlfriend's name. We're trying to catch up on all that kind of activity.
That happened to me. It cost me $600. And they went down the street and got utilities from the village without a delay, by putting it in their boyfriend's name.
What?
We're trying to...
Legally?
We're trying to work on that.
Yeah, but those are the things, I mean, it's not just about...
Those people don't perceive anybody.
Right. Well, it's not just about the renters, though. It's that kind of situation. What do you guys have in writing that you can do?
Well...
If it's a cohabitant, you know, you, well, I know, not if it's a, not if it's a renter. Then you put it on that other landlord's taxes. It gets passed from landlord to landlord. What I'm saying is, and Fred brought it up, what do you do if they're cohabitating and they stiff a landlord on this one, and they go across the street and rent from another landlord, and they put it in the other person's name that they're cohabitating with? You can't, legally, right now, you can't do anything.
We couldn't in the future, really.
I don't know. I don't know what you can do. That's a tricky question.
Whoever that name is, who you can deal with.
See, that's a game, too, though.
And you're dealing with, and unfortunately, in the business venture you're in, you are entertaining a lot of that mentality.
Well, what I will say to you, Fred, first off, is I didn't come here to be contentious. I'm not gonna get, I don't wanna get upset. I don't wanna be upset. But I do not appreciate the implication that I'm not doing due diligence with my renters, because I do. I do background checks. I do all of that. But when they are delinquent and they're paying me, how am I gonna know? You know, how am I gonna know that that's happening? So I don't appreciate that, but I hear what you're saying. And maybe you weren't speaking to me specifically, but it kind of felt that way. So I don't appreciate that, but I understand.
Well, I'm talking about a system, not an individual. But at the same time, I do feel a solution is, which would include you, is to keep the utilities in your name, because then you could control that.
You have said that to me before. So I asked that question of other municipalities that I contacted, if they require the utility to be put in the landlord's name. And DeGraff does not. Wapok does not. Lima has a statement in there that either it is in the landlord's name or the landlord must come in and sign an agreement that they will be responsible for any in the rearage. But it has to be a signed agreement. So then that's the only way it could go into the city's name. So what, two out of three say, "No, we don't do that." The larger city does do that.
McGuffey does require that they have by ordinance that it has to stay in the property owner's name.
So what I'm saying is, it's an either, it can be an either or, you know, it depends. I personally, you know, as the landlord, don't wanna do that, because how do I determine what I'm gonna charge them? And how, you know, how, what, can I have an average of what they used last year so I can come up with?
Oh, yeah. I mean, even AEP, if you was to go to AEP, they have a history of that location.
If you go to buy a house, they can tell you.
And they will give you what the usage is for a year, and we could do that, for example. We could tell you, it's your property, what your usage was for a year. And you could do the math on that and build that in. Or, in some cases, you just literally pass it on. You may be a month behind, but if they're a good tenant, that wouldn't really be a problem, because we're operating a month behind. We're actually operating in good faith a month behind. Somebody comes in and pays a deposit, they start out, they don't get their first bill for 30 days. We're trusting them, and so that'd be the same thing with you. If you give them their monthly rent with a decent deposit, then, when you get your bill, you pass it on to them. And they should pay it then or within 10 days, whatever your agreement is.
And like I say, the way the system works, unlike, say, you wanna get your propane tank filled, you better have the money or a credit line already established. But what happens, like you mentioned earlier, in the winter time, they get their tank filled. Okay, we're ready for winter. And about January 2nd, oh, we're out of gas. We got no money. Christmas is just over. So crank up the electric heaters. Next thing you know, it's three times what it normally would be. And then, if they don't get it paid by the next month, it's six times what it should have been.
Well, isn't it ironic, dealing with several different pro...
Well, isn't it ironic, dealing with several different propane companies, that never once have any of them suggested to us that the propane be in the landowner's name? It's always in the renter's name.
Well, when the propane company shows up, they collect, just like the gas station...
Oh, I get it. Just as you guys should collect utilities.
We can't give you electric, no, no, we can't give you electric until after the fact. They give you the propane right now.
No, I get it, I get it.
No, you go to the gas station, you fill it up, you get 20 gallons, you pay for 20 gallons.
I have renters that are on monthly payments with propane, okay? Because they've rented long enough...
They're established.
...to have built up, you know, an established issue.
But that...
But I was using that as an example. And as far as the utilities being in my name for a renter, I'm not selling the product.
Well, at the same time, we don't have a say in who you put in there either.
You're right.
You give us whoever you want, and we deal with it.
No.
Does it any difference if you're a resident buying a house?
No, but we put it on their taxes.
Well, all we're asking is this.
Go ahead.
If, if we can put something in writing to the village where we will not authorize any of our renters to be in a delinquent state, will the village...
Honor them?
...abide that?
I think technically, we could honor it.
I would, let me say this.
The tenant would have to agree with that as well.
Sure, sure.
I think if our legal team says we can do that, and I would want to make sure, and this council said they support that, we would definitely do everything we could to enforce that. We really would.
And have a specific shut-off date, right?
Sure.
I mean...
Maintain, that's right.
Because it would supersede our regulations.
That we would want, we would want the shut-off enforced by the village for any of our renters who were delinquent.
And then, I think in addition to that, and I don't know, your legal counsel's making notes back here, so I imagine we would have to get this other one signed, because obviously, I'm going to want to know if the electricity's getting turned off on my property in the middle of December.
Yeah, you would want, you would need that.
Yeah, so I would need to know that.
Yeah, you definitely would need to know that.
Yeah. So, you know, if it's in the tenant's name, and I give you that letter, by...
If you had privy to that, if you had privy to that by signing that letter and having them sign it, I'm not so sure that it couldn't even be a case where we contact you prior to and say, "By tomorrow, it's going to be turned off."
Right. If they're delinquent by the 10th of the month, if I've got a signed paper, but there's nothing that says you can't contact me, because you'll send out notice of disconnect.
Exactly.
And you could just send a duplicate to the landlord.
Exactly. See, if you sign that letter, you can actually be on the billing, where you get a copy of the bill each month. That gives you authorization for their bill.
I would ask from this that, that maybe you could have your legal counsel look at the letter I'm referring to, and...
Yeah, if you give me the letter.
...clean it up a little bit.
We'll look at it, yeah.
In terms of being able to put dates and, and...